This conference will now be recorded.
Are y'all still not seeing my PowerPoint?
No.
Nope.
Yes.
I'm gonna pause it and try it again. Hang on a second.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good every, good evening everyone. Welcome to the January the 11th, 2021 work session. We apologize for the delay. We had some technical difficulties, but everything should be good to go now. You may notice a unfamiliar voice. I'm Brian Garrison, City Council Ward Blaine Council member and Mayor Protem. And unfortunately, I will be presiding over the meetings tonight. Our mayor, Mayor Womack and his wife and of course his son have COVID-19 and aren't feeling the best. So first and foremost, I'd like to express our prayers and concerns for his family and hopes of a speedy recovery. So with that, we'll get started with council discussion and I'll turn it over to Stephen. First item on that agenda is face covering ordinance.
Thank you. And for a little shopkeeping, if you would, if you're not speaking, please mute yourself. It will keep any feedback from coming back through the mics. And if you start talking, we'll remind you if you muted yourself. Chief, if you would, would you hide your camera? I'm trying to have it just so that council's being recorded with their cameras. Thank you, sir. All right. So Eric, if you would, if you'll kind of advance through as we go through, I appreciate it. So if you'll go to the next slide, you can keep going. Just wanted to give an update on the face covering ordinance. We did adopt this at the council meeting on December 14th, 2020. We did tie it to the governor's executive order for COVID-19. The governor last extended this state of emergency on January 7th. He does them in 14 day increments, so it will run through the 21st. And I do not see any reason why he will not continue it past that point, especially with vaccinations beginning to roll out. When it was adopted, council did state that they would want to revisit the ordinance to see whether it would need to be repealed, amended, whether they wanted to make it any tougher or make any changes that may come up along the way, whether it has to do with vaccinations or changes from the governor's orders or any of that kind of stuff. I did kind of survey the council members to see if there was any changes they were looking to make this time. And what I got from feedback from the majority of the council members was that they wanted to kind of let it run as is, at least for the next month, since we just adopted about a month ago, and see how things are going, look at the numbers. So I do have some numbers behind here. I'll get to those in just a second. But just a couple of things I did wanna, did say, did want to say that the cases in the county have increased through the holidays. We still have the highest rate per population in the state. And that you'll see our testing numbers and our COVID deaths in the county. One of the things I did want to point out is that over 45% of our COVID deaths have occurred since December 1st, 2020, from the entire pandemic. So I just wanted to update you on kind of where we are as of the data that was available today. So Eric, if you'll move forward. This gives you our daily positive cases. The black number you see running in there, the black line you've seen running is a seven day running average of the number of positives per day. So you can see that that number has continued to kind of creep up. So if we're averaging between about 150 to 200 cases per day, then that means over a seven period, seven day period, we would have, you know, with 200 cases, we'd have about 1,400. You'll see that as we go to our total case, kind of the chart on the next page. You'll see the cumulative cases. So what you're seeing there, again, we went over these last month, is the number of days it takes to increase by 1,000 cases. So our first one was 46 days. You can see pretty much since about the 1st of December, it's taken eight days, eight days, another eight days, and the last two weeks, it took two times. It's been six days and a seven days. So that means that's how many days it's taken for it to increase by 1,000 cases. So when we cross the threshold up there of 10,000 cases in Pickens County, it took six days to get to 11,000 cases. And then it took seven days to get from there to 12,000 cases. Back in August and September, that was taking four weeks. Now it's taking a week to make that, that kind of increase in cases. And on the next slide, you'll see again, the 14 day running total, running average. So what this tracks is a 14 day look back to kind of capture all the cases that are positive, that are ongoing and active within the county. And you can see that's continued to climb and it's kind of plateaued out about 2,000 cases right now. It kind of seems to be where we're resting over the last couple of weeks has been right around 2,000, 2,200, somewhere in that range, based on the numbers that we've had positive. And then the next slide will show you again, per 100,000 population, Pickens County. You can see that in the top left, we're still the number one in the state for the number of cases per 100,000 people. Number two is Dillon. You can't see that on there. And then number three is Greenville. So you can kind of see us in Greenville are at the top of the per thousand cases in the state of South Carolina. And then the next slide will show you our average percent positive. So you can see that over the seven day movement average in Pickens County, we're at about 32.3% of our tests have been positive. So you can see that the state average has constantly increased, but we've, we've pretty much been over about 20% positive since about first part of November, middle, first to middle of November. But that number has steadily increased to where about a third of the tests that we perform in this county are coming back positive right now. And that was part of the discussion we had last, last month about, are we testing more? Well, you can see that some of these, like you can look at the last day, day that's available. We conducted about 700 tests. But look at the blue line showing you, we were, you know, over 35% positive. But you can go back and see that we tested more back around the 1st of December and didn't have nearly as many positive cases. So the testing doesn't necessarily find the cases. It just, when a third of your cases are coming back positive, it's not mattering whether we're testing 100 or 1,000. We're still getting the same percentage of positive out of the cases. So that kind of gives you a summary of where we are with the face covering ordinance and kind of where the data's looking. Like I said, last discussion I had with council was that there was no desire to kind of amend it, just kind of leave it as is and see how the numbers do moving forward. But I can answer any questions or talk about anything specific that you may want to.
Well, Stephen, I, you've got some great data there and I understand it and it's very sobering data. But I just want to, I want to recap where we were this time last, when we adopted the ordinance. We were at a cumulative 81, 83 cases, 8,183 cases with 111 deaths. And as of yesterday, that number had gone up to 12,088 cases with 175 deaths. So the bottom line is, you know, this past month, we've got 4,000 additional cases. That's 4,000 cases for the Pickens County. And the worst part of it is that's 64, 64 deaths netted out. So yeah, we should not back off of what we're doing. If anything, if anything, next month, we've got to look at this and this, we may have to, we may have to put some fines on, on these ordinances. So that's my thoughts.
If I might, I agree with what Kent has said. I'm content with leaving it right now, but I am worried about this trend. And if we do need to get more strict, we can do it next, next time. But I think right now we need to wait and see what happens and I'm hoping, hoping that they come back down.
Anyone else? I tend to agree with both Kent and Pat, by the way. Terry?
I certainly agree because it's not only we see it on the news now, look next door is happening here. We know these people are dying. We know these people that are sick. It's not like a thing that you see on the worldwide news, just here in our city and in our county. So we need to do something to try to control it a little better.
I agree.
Stephen, I, go ahead, Nancy, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I also agree that we just have to do something a little bit stricter if the numbers are totally different from this month.
Stephen, I have a question. It may, this may be a question for Lang. Have we had any calls with business owners trying to enforce the mask mandate? And then, you know, receiving reluctance where the police needed to be called?
Not that I know of. There's, we get some complaints in from the, from the state about some of the restaurants not using, the employees not using their mask when they're working. As far as the public, we have not had any complaints that I know of unless it was something that we handled and it didn't make it far enough to be seen by me.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
I'll add in that we have had several calls to City Hall, more so about businesses not enforcing the mask requirements. But that, that's been the majority of we've had, or they tried to enforce them on them and they weren't happy about it. So we've kind of gotten a combination of complaints. But that's, I'd say we get maybe a, I'd say maybe a dozen a week or so. But a lot more questions just on what's in the ordinance and trying to get some clarification.
Okay. Anyone else? Terry?
Yes, one more comment. On the streets, talking to people, we were condemned for bonus ordinance. But on the street, people are saying they thank this for what we've did and hoping that we can do more because this is such a serious event that nobody knows the masks may not help, like some of them are saying. But again, if you're doing anything to prevent this virus whatsoever, we're making some progress. So we're not being criticized for it. We're encouraged to do more. It's very few that I've had say negative remarks.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the development impact fee committee report. Pat, I guess that's you. Or Stephen, you gotta speak first.
Well, let's say, Ms. Webb, I don't put this on here for anything except for just to keep track of it so we don't forget about it. But I really put it on here just, like I said, so we make sure we remember to just discuss it every month.
Any updates, Pat?
Thank you, Stephen. I have had no time to put it together because of COVID, Christmas, getting people lined up. It's been very difficult through the holidays and the pandemic. So I apologize for not having put this together and gotten going. It's just the timing and the sicknesses. Thank you.
Okay, Stephen, strategic planning?
All right. On the next page, you'll see just kind of, kind of what I emailed out to everybody about it being 2021. Our original strategic plan that we adopted in 2018, we did it for three years. We did it for that purpose, just because we wanted to make sure that the next time we came to revisit it, that it was after the new mayor and council had been sworn in and give the new mayor and council members a year to kind of get their feet underneath them and be prepared to start talking about long-term planning, about goals that they want to achieve. Just to kind of go a little bit into 2018, we identified three core principles. Those were quality places, quality services, and quality community. That was what the strategic plan was geared around. Part of the review would be to kind of review where the, part of the next strategic plan would be to review what was done and what we accomplished the last three years and then look how we want to take it forward, or whether it's time to reprioritize what some of these goals and objectives need to be. Jeff, Jeff Chacker with the Municipal Associated Association helped us last time. And if you were on council then, you remember he came in over about two to three different meetings and met with council, department heads, and then council again to kind of put everything together. The goal would be to kind of follow that same similar pattern. And he's willing to help us again. I originally had talked about doing it in about a week, but with everything going on, I feel that it'd be better to push it off into February. So we're looking at February 16th and 17th. What we were talking about doing is meeting from say like 10 to 2 and doing a work, doing a working lunch during that time. So if you could look at your calendars and let me know whether one of those two days would work best or would not work at all, so that we can look at, at scheduling it. But that would be about two weeks before we have our budget retreat, two to three weeks before our budget retreat. So it would kind of tie in line as we start doing our budget for 2021, 22, to have the goals and objectives fresh in council's head as we start moving forward into the budget work sessions.
Well, I think it's a good idea. I think it was helpful in having Mr. Chacker from the Municipal Association. I would encourage us to do that again. Just having someone moderate and lead and direct the conversation, I think it was a huge benefit.
So I'll leave it, if y'all would, just if you are okay with both of those days, don't worry about sending me anything. But if one of those days will not work for you, please just send me a note and let me know and I'll work on trying to find a date that works for all seven.
And Stephen, that would be either or, correct? Not both?
Yes, sir, either or.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, sounds good. Let's move on to the 2020 road paving list.
And sorry, that's a typo. It should be 2021 as we're moving forward. We put 2020 behind us here.
Sorry.
No, that's my mistake.
I'm reading. I should have caught that.
So as we move forward, one of the things we do, starting last year, we began receiving funds the county back to do our own road maintenance. We did put together a list of roads. I'm gonna go through a recommendation for this year and then I think I have a couple of slides in here to hit on the last year as well. So these are the ones that, and meeting, and Public Works reviewing and talking, that they recommend moving forward. You can see a lot of these were on our 2000, when we bid out in fall of 2019 for the 2020 road repaving that we did not get to. One of the main reasons we did not is because of what happened with South Second and Dogwood Lane. Back then, when both those culverts began to collapse, we were unsure of where we were going to find the funds to repair those. We held the road, the road and stormwater funds for those two projects until we were able to get the CTC fund, or C funds from the county, apologize, C funds, as well as the grant from the Rural Infrastructure Authority. Now that we have those funds in place, we can release a lot more funds back to paving roads again because we won't have to use them on South Second and Dogwood. Part of the re, the repairs on South Second Street does include redoing the sidewalks that are failing and repaving the road over there. That would be, as you can see, it's on the top of the list there, that would still be held for a potential project for this year as we begin redoing that culvert and that road. I would say in discussion, discussion with Public Works, that what you see is kind of the purple color with Canin Land, Kane, Cannon, Canin Land? Excuse me, I always struggle with that. And the Dale, Peachtree, and Skylane Cluster, those would be our top two priorities to complete first. And our goal would be to kind of hit with what you see in this list. They're clustered into neighborhoods or tightly packed areas so that we can try to get it the best bang for our buck by doing Canin Land. We can get in there and we can do the whole neighborhood. Even though three of the roads are in okay shape and three are in bad shape, we can go ahead and do the whole neighborhood and be done and not have to go back and piece it together over the next two or three years. This will allow us to complete the neighborhood and hopefully not have to go back for any major maintenance for two to, two to three decades. So that would be the long-term goal in trying to do some of these clusters that we have in here. If we go to the next slide, this shows them on a map to kind of give you an idea of where they're located in these clusters. So you can see Huntington South down there to the bottom. You can see Canin Land up to the top. You can see the Peachtree and Dale kind of in the middle and a couple of the other different neighborhoods that are in there. And then, and then on the right, it shows you, we, we currently have about 425,000. We should get about another 200 to 225 during the calendar year. And, and then I kind of explained the rest of that on the previous PowerPoint. So Public Works and I are on here. We can answer any questions that council may have. I can tell you the goal is to, once we get through with the meeting, is to get these advertised out for bid here in the next couple of weeks and try to have them back to council. Probably be at the March meeting to award so that whenever the weather begins to turn warm and then to March 1st to April, we can start moving forward with paving.
Stephen, go back to the previous slide with the list of streets again. Okay. All right. Now, help me with this. Do I interpret that every one of these streets are going to be done? Is it the way I understood?
No, so we would bid them all out to see what the pricing comes back in at. But as you can see, the ones that have pricing beside them, they were ones that we couldn't afford to do last year because we held the funds. The goal would be, we know we can do probably three to four of these, but we want to put the pricing out to see what we get back so we can see which clusters we can afford to do with the budget that we have.
We say three to four, is that three to four clusters, three to four neighborhoods?
Yes, sir. And we're looking at, that's based on what the pricing came back in last year. We could probably knock out the bottom three clusters with the budget funding that we would have. But then the other ones back, probably we would, we would put them on top of the priority for next year. The ones we're talking about with Canin and Dale, Peachtree, and Skylane, those were ones that were the next ones on our list last year before we had the issues with South Second and Dogwood and pulled the funds and then it got too cold to pave. So that's why they would be on the top of our priority this year. Those would have been the next ones we would have moved to. These are not guaranteed to be complete. Once we, and part of that has to do with, these are, we don't know what the cost is going to come back in. And we also don't know, as you can see with Chadwick, there's some conditions over there that may drive the cost up. They poured another set of road and curb on top of old road and curb. So there's some major issues over there that are going to have to, that, that may drive the cost up as we try to repair them and try to fix some of the conditions that are there. Happened last year on several streets, especially over on like South, I think it was North D or South D and Jackson and Andrew and a couple of those. They actually, we had to redo the entire base of the road because they had just paved straight on top of dirt. So there were some roads we had to actually rebuild the base and it drove the cost, cost up. And so we don't know that until we actually get out there and start grinding up the roads, what we're going to find underneath a lot of them.
Thank you.
Pat?
I've ridden these roads and I'm very concerned. As Stephen said, there may be some milling replaced, which is going to increase our cost, particularly the ones off of Couch Lane. And they have Miami roll curbs. So you can't just add pavement to something with a Miami roll curb. It's got to come back and tie into those Miami roll curbs. I'm also really upset with the, the ones Bentley Crofton, Stapleford, and Till House. The utility lines have all sunk in. So once we start opening those up, how are we going to, or do we have a scope of work that is already written out to talk about how we're going to replace those? If, if we're doing them, we've got to take out the fill in the ditches. We're going to have to compact it with good fill. I assume what's there is wet and soggy. And I did notice particularly with Patrick and going back in, again, the curbs are gone. So if we're going to preserve the curbs, that's going to cost more. So those are the kinds of things that I think are going to run our costs up when we put this list out. We need to find that out before we actually decide how far we can go with it. And, and I'm a little bit worried about what those costs will end up being. And there were trees in the, in the center of the ones off of Couch Lane. I don't know who owns the trees in the cul-de-sacs, but the roots from the trees are breaking up the pavements. And that does not need to be left there. And I'm sure that's not going to make us popular with the homeowners. That's my, my comment.
So to just address a couple of those, we agree 100% and that's kind of why we put this out. And we know when we put it out to bid, we do have a scope of work for each of the roads to outline the patching, the curve reveal, the milling and all of that. I just did not, didn't include all that in this just for simplification. But we'll identify all of that and have that as part of the pricing. We'll also do a pre-bid when they, so we can take them out and explain to them. But yeah, and Chadwick, the, the Patrick Pleasant Elrod, there's probably some stormwater funds that we'll have to put towards some of those projects because they poured asphalt, they poured a new road over the old road and curb. So there's some major, there's some, some stormwater issues that'll have to be addressed in there as well. And I'm not sure if Justin and Eric and Eddie are all on, but they can probably, if you have more questions about anything, they can probably answer it in far more detail than I can.
I'm good with that. I do notice a lot of block cracking. That's a significant thing for age. Block cracking happens with age. Alligator cracking happens because the subbase is bad. And so, yeah, there's going to be a lot of subgrade issues on these roads that I've seen. So I hope we've got enough money. I want to see us do as much as can be. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have no agenda item presentations, so we'll move on to project updates from staff.
All right. So the first one's just operations and maintenance. And we've, I just have some pictures in here to kind of show you some updates. They're kind of all hands on deck of ops and maintenance. They installed our hoist last week and you can kind of see, they're putting the last bit of metal on. They, they had to put the expansion joint on last week, so they're closing the final bit of it in. Keep going on the, on the pictures. Here's some of the tile work in the bathrooms, the floors and offices were getting ground down. They've now got the, the coats on them for the hallways and several of the office in the other areas. They've sealed them already, the concrete floors. And then I think the next one- And then I think the next one, kind of see, they've got all the storefronts in now. Um, they're mudding sheet rock in the final bit of it. They're kind of, like you said, they're kind of all hands on deck on this one right now, just because we're getting equipment delivered this week and over the next couple of weeks to start kind of finalizing the building. There's lockers coming in, there's, uh, pallet racks coming in, furniture coming and all of that. So they're trying to finalize everything there. The fire station has suffered a little bit for that. Um, we're talking to fire chief about that. They've kind of pulled people off of that one. Um, and it's mostly electrician and HVAC working over there right now. And it just so happened while I was out there today checking on them that I think the electrician had to go get tested for COVID. So that slowed down and, you know, so it's the fire station, we're going to be, have to see a big push on it coming after we get, um, about a week or so out here, but they're hoping to get their roughing inspection. You can go to the next slides for the fire station. Uh, keep going. Um, they're hoping to get their roughing inspection and then start, um, mudding and sheet rocking here in the next couple of weeks over there, which will start transforming it a good bit. But, um, mostly everything's done except for the electrical and the HVAC. Um, I think I've got a couple, one more picture of the fire station, uh, one more. And that's just showing the entryway and then the doors and what you see there is a new platform. That was a change order we had to do. Um, they had to cut out a part of the old, old, uh, steel structure of the old building to allow for the fire pole installation. So that's just showing that's been complete now. So, but that's, we're kind of seeing some of the delays that we've had from COVID and weather and everything catching up onto us and delaying a little bit. But, um, I think you'll still see the ops and maintenance about a month out. And then the fire station is the one that seems to be taking the brunt of it. But I think in about a month to six weeks, you'll see a big transformation in the fire station.
Any comment?
Looks good. On the budget?
All right. Next slide. Um, so just wanted to, as we do every month, kind of give you an update on how COVID's impacting financials. For top left one is a local option sales tax. Um, I did break it down a little bit this month since we're, um, getting close to being, um, having halfway numbers for 2020, 2021 budget. Um, I kind of broke it down for the first half of the year through the end of the year. So you can see on local option sales tax, uh, for the first six months, we're about 105,000 over where we were in 2019. Uh, five months in, we're about 76,000. So we're, we're running somewhat to where we were, um, for the first half of the year. Uh, business licenses, again, I kind of broke it up last, last fiscal year, we ended up being about, 92,000 over for the first half of the year. And since then, we've been about 105,000 over 2019. Hospitality, you can see it's running pretty much, um, since for this fiscal year, we're running pretty much level with where we were last year. We did, well, you'll see like November's down a little bit, but what we're seeing is, people are, some people are running a little bit behind. So we might be down that amount and 23 payees, but next month it might be even and down to minus 10. So they're, they're, they're coming in, they're just lagging a little bit. That's one thing we've noticed. And then on the accommodations, you can see it's still, that, that's, that's where we're still lagging behind. With the accommodations, we're actually lower through the first five months than we were through the whole first six months of the year. For the first six months, we were down about 9,500. Right now we're down about 12,000. I think a lot of that has to do with, uh, without the football games going on and basketball and all of that in Clemson. You're seeing, um, where that difference is coming in is, is mostly in the athletics. It didn't take place. And then, and I can answer any questions that council may have.
Understand. Looks okay.
Okay. Doesn't sound like anything else, Stephen. Uh, stormwater projects. Thanks for that update.
All right. Um, I'm gonna let, uh, Public Works talk about the next two with stormwater and grass collections.
This is Eric, Stormwater Director. Um, so we've completed a lot of the projects over in Couch. The swells in Couch are completed right now to a point, um, we're waiting to see how those flow with the next storm event and make a decision there if we're complete or if we'll do further work. Um, we are moving to complete the Fairfax and Halifax swells. Uh, that's the next one. Um, so once we complete those, I want to try to get Huntington to a point where we can walk away from it for a little bit. And then we'll focus on Couch Lane. We'll see. I think that's going to take us, it's going to be a while with the weather. We've been having, uh, to complete all the, all those, uh, repairs. Um, then, uh, we do have the bid list out. Well, Stephen's working on it, the bid list for all the projects that we've identified to, uh, to repair. Uh, I have that bid list. If you're interested in it, I can email it out to you so you can kind of get an idea of where the problem areas are in your ward. So that has the address and the GPS location where these locations are. Uh, Dogwood and South Second is under, uh, we have hired an engineer for roger. Uh, we do have, like Stephen said, the RIA, RIA grant and the C funds money. So those will be coming up, uh, sometime in spring. We'll start working on those.
After the holiday, we'll be getting back with Troy to see if they're getting the, uh, packages ready to go out.
Ziva, have any questions about scheduling or any other projects or projects listed?
Doesn't appear so. Thank you. How about grass collection?
And that is, that is adding. With, or the Public Works Committee is going to be holding a meeting coming up in the next weeks. And right now I'm going back and going through different municipalities to see what their ordinance states. And there's quite a few that just pick up, uh, quote unquote, the grass slash from like the, uh, first of November through March 31st. And then there's a few of them that during the summer that, that, uh, say that they want the residents to bag it by the curb side. But we were trying to see if we could, uh, maybe come up with some plan, figure out what kind of plan we're going to do to, to take care of those expenses. And that's going to be in our, in our meeting coming up so that we can, to council to see which, which way council prefers.
Hey, can you update everybody on the status of, uh, the truck? Have, have we lost a, a leaf truck?
Well, currently we, the, the old truck did, the motor went out in it. We are, we are out for quotes to see what the cost would be to, to, uh, to rebuild that motor. I've got it in my wish list for another leaf truck for next year. It would have, it'll have a larger container than the one we purchased this, uh, this past time. That one was running good until Thursday and Peterbilt and the guys that sold it to us through back are going to be on site tomorrow. There was some debris buildup on the back bed where the vacuum engine is. And it ignited some of these leaves. And so we're having to rewire a portion of the truck.
Whoa.
Yeah, it was, it caught on fire as they was pulling into the fuel depot down out back.
Wow. That's, that's not good.
Fortunate thing was the water hose and the fire extinguisher was right, right where he pulled in. It could have been worse.
Hmm. Thank you.
We picked up four, about 454 tons in the month of December. And that was mainly leaves, of course.
Anyone else have questions for Eddie? Thanks, Eddie.
Thank you.
Next, next item is any, um, are there any updates from, uh, departments? Would you like to speak?
I'll also left this in case council has any questions they have of the department heads. This is a good chance to, to ask.
I was going to remind everybody that the rec department does have the, um, recreation committee meeting this Thursday at 8:30. So consider that a reminder. Um, but you should get an email from Lisa as well. And I will be sending out an agenda probably Wednesday for you guys to review. So you know what's going on in the meeting.
Is that meeting going to be at City Hall or Rec Department?
No, so yes, it's set for the, the rec department at the gym.
Thank you.
We can move it to City Hall if you feel more comfortable, but we, I figured we could space out at the large room upstairs in the gym.
Good deal. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I just want to update you about the court. The court administration, Supreme Court of South Carolina has, uh, sent out a, uh, an order from the Supreme Court Chief Justice Friday stating that we were, uh, suspending all in-person court activities until further notice. What, uh, Judge Sterling and I are working on, hopefully we're going to do a test on Wednesday is to set up a virtual courtroom. Uh, we're going to use both our courtrooms here in the building and try to see if we can establish a virtual courtroom for defendants to be, uh, come in and, and for, and we're going to schedule that on a very limited basis and see if it works. Uh, if so, that we can keep some court, the court moving and try to keep the backlog from becoming unmanageable.
That's a good move. Good move.
Anyone else? Stephen, you have anything?
Uh, no, sir. Just, um, I will say that we are starting to see our police and fire. I said, no, sir. There's one thing. Sorry. Police and fire have access to the vaccine, vaccine for COVID. I know they're signing up to take that. Um, they started taking it, I think last Thursday was the first. And, uh, we have some that even went today to get vaccinated. And then the governor announced today that as of January 13th, that those over the age of 70 in South Carolina can now, can start signing up to get their COVID vaccine. So I think that's after January 13th or on January 13th, you can begin signing up. So, um, we're starting to see more of a vaccination rollout. Um, and we'll, um, let you know as that continues to move forward.
Brian, I, I've, I've got one if we can share to the, uh, the, all the department, Stephen and all the other departments. But I, I was reading in the, uh, the municipal association, South Town or the uptown, that now is the time for to submit for the 2021 achievement award for local governments to show what's, uh, showcase what they're doing in the communities, uh, statewide. And, uh, we have done this in the past and, uh, we've never won it. But we, we've done this in the past, but it's a good opportunity. All the, the good things that we're, that the city's been doing, uh, over this past year to, uh, to write it up and, uh, present it and let it compete with other municipalities. And, and let's just see if we can win one of these awards, these municipality awards. You have to go online to get the entry form at, uh, M A S C dot S C, the municipal association website and get that, uh, form. Uh, the, the issue is that it's, uh, the January, the 27th, which is not very far away, is the deadline for submission. So I, I think it would be, uh, worthwhile if y'all could, if the department heads could brainstorm and, and let's come up with a really, uh, we've got so many good things. I look at what has been submitted in the past from other municipalities and, and there's some great stuff, but I'm telling you, uh, easily is, is right in there with them with the good stuff that y'all are doing. That's all I've got.
Kent said something that reminded me. Do we have financial interest disclosure forms that we'll need to be filing sometime soon?
Yes, sir. They'll be due by the end of March, by March 30th.
Will you remind us?
I will. I'll, I'll, I'll use, send a reminder out every, um, then the end of January and the end of February. And, um, once you, uh, get all of your pertinent information and are ready to fill it out, I'll be more than glad to, um, remind you and help you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other items? Seeing and hearing none, um, the work session will come to a close. And then, uh, Stephen, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have three separate uh, meeting invites. So we will need to, um, log off and then log back on, uh, at 6:30. Uh, so council can consider going in, into executive session, correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everyone. See you in a few minutes.